For a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance. Okay, we're gonna have Mayor DJ Petrowski from Cortland lead us in prayer. Okay, our next public workshop will be next Tuesday, November fourteenth at ten AM in this room. And our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, November fifteenth at ten thirty AM also in this room. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated November first, two thousand and twenty-three, and accept and approve the video recording of the November first, two thousand and twenty-three Commissioners' regular meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Uh, because the video recordings are, and the way these are being done is not compliant, no.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
A motion to approve.
Well, second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to transfer appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to receive the amended certificate of the County Budget Commission, number twenty-two dash two thousand and twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign a memorandum of agreement between Clark Schaefer Hackett, an independent public accountant, Mr. Keith Faber, Auditor of the State of Ohio, and Trumbull County for the contract to audit Trumbull County for the fiscal period of January first, two thousand and twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is a routine liquor permit, and this is a transfer of classes D five and D six from B and C Eatery LLC and Patio to Coach's Burger Bar One O Five LLC and Patio.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Okay, item number eight is authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds amended Vienna Historical Society. And Commissioners, if you would, please go to the next page. Whereas the Vienna Historical Society is a five oh one C nonprofit which provides historical preservation and education for the community, and whereas the Vienna Historical Society has requested funding, the amount of sixty thousand dollars for a renovation project for historical structure preserved by the society, whereas the county has determined that the Vienna Historical Society has demonstrated it has adversely impacted industry and the grant request is reasonable, responsive to harm, and therefore the county has determined that in the judgment of the board, the following grant qualifies as a type of project which will respond to and mitigate the adverse economic effects of the pandemic which consist of the following: A one-time grant to the Vienna Historical Society in the amount of sixty thousand dollars for the preservation of the Copper Penny Building, including installation of a wheelchair ramp, electrical upgrades, new gutters, new metal roof, a fire escape, excavations and waterproofing around the building, and new windows as set forth in the grant agreement. And whereas this resolution will replace the resolution approved on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three for purposes of approving the amended grant agreement attached hereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion to approve authorizing the expenditure for the Vienna Historical Society amendment with the ARPA agreement.
What's the difference between that? What more, more, did you change something?
No, you just said to approve and technically somewhat, when one of us makes the motion, one of us should say what, what the motion.
We haven't done that until now.
Doing it.
When have we done that?
Second.
I do it.
One of them, either of them.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, it should have been me first, so.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number nine is to enter into an amended agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the Vienna Historical Society as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel for the society to preserve and improve the Copper Penny Building with electrical upgrades, ADA compliance, and other listed improvements. And the Board of County Commissioners allocates the sum of sixty thousand dollars to the society, and the note, this authorization will replace the agreement previously authorized by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to enter the amended agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the Vienna Historical Society.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number ten is to authorize the engineering firm of Burgess and Nyppel, Inc. to provide the technical services as listed with regard to the State Road Water Regionalization Project, project number two dash W dash twenty-three in Champion and Southington Townships, and to enter into an engineering agreement with Burgess and Nyppel, Inc., for said professional services in an amount not to exceed three hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Uh, only because I didn't, we weren't, the Board of Commissioners was not given the, uh, the responses with the statements of qualifications. We weren't given any other ranking information or the scoring sheets. Um, I, I have to vote no because I didn't get an opportunity to review any of this because it wasn't provided to the board.
Item number eleven is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign and accept for use substantial completion of the newly constructed Mineral Ridge Booster Station and other appurtenances as part of the Mineral Ridge Hydraulics Improvement Project, Contract B, known as County Project two dash W dash fifteen in the Mineral Ridge Public Water System, Weathersfield Township.
Motion to authorize President of the Board to sign and accept substantial completion for the Mineral Ridge Booster Station.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco. Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number twelve is to adopt a resolution declaring the necessity of constructing the Scoville Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, number five dash S dash sixteen for the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District, Vienna Township. And under the note, Thursday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven PM is hereby fixed as the time at Matthews High School Cafeteria, Vienna, Ohio, four 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 seven three, as the place of hearing of objections to or acceptance of project number five dash S dash sixteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Discussion, I just, I would like to, I know our public hearings are different than public meetings, they're supposed to be very structured and comply with the statutory process, and in the past, um, the last few of them have been quite out of control, and I'd like to ask the Board if they would allow me to conduct that meeting, the public hearing.
That wouldn't be a negative on my part.
To conduct, to conduct the meeting rather than Gary conduct the meeting?
No, um, instead of the President of the Board, remember when they were, he was running around in the audience and people couldn't hear and the court reporter couldn't?
That was, that was an issue with the audio system that we had, not necessarily with anybody on the board.
Talking, and it's different, this is a public hearing, I, I would just like to be able to run it more efficiently because it is, it is important that everything be captured, I, I.
It wasn't captured?
No, there were parts of it that were inaudible because the court reporter.
Which parts of it?
Okay.
No, I'm asking which parts of it?
Um, and it was, I, I had.
You have a copy of the, of the transcripts?
She was complaining during the proceeding that peop, that people were out.
Gary, did we get a copy of the transcripts from her yet?
I'm just saying that I would run the meeting more properly to make sure that we stayed on track and it's ver, it's different than this, it's a.
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, I have not got the, the transcript in yet, um. I haven't got the invoice from her either, so I'm not sure if there are some portions that weren't inaudible, but reason for that was the sound system at Yankee Lake Ballroom, I mean, it had nothing to do with.
No.
The reason, no, the, the reason for that is because rather than, rather than having, as we were supposed to, had I been running the meeting, I would, and, and when I had to interrupt and, and to tell everyone that they needed to come to the front, we had another Commissioner running around the room like it was a, like it was a talk show, and we need to make sure that people come to the front so that the court reporter can hear that, it's not just a regular meeting, it's a public hearing.
You were talking about running a meeting like a talk show.
And I.
Right, well, well, the problem was, it was a squelching of his microphones.
Right.
Uh, if you stood in a certain spot, you, you had to.
I hear you making excuses, I'm just asking.
And that, that was, and I, I, I was very disappointed with the accommodations there, I mean, as far as the sound system went, that was a disaster.
Yes.
I mean, it threw off my whole presentation, not being able to move the way I wanted to, and having to stand in certain spots and getting that squelch over the microphone, I, I mean, uh, and.
And that's why people were having to move, unfortunately.
And we've had them at this Vienna Cafeteria before, and, and we've ran flawless, uh, public hearings in there, so, so I don't see that as a factor at all.
We don't go out to the audience and ask people to talk in their seats, we have them come up so that the court reporter cannot only hear.
We normally do.
But that's not what happened, and we had the ability.
Because of that sound system, if the sound system was working, that's exactly how it would have worked.
Still had the ability for them to come to the front and be seen and heard.
So, those people with handicapped.
But.
Some of them, some of them.
Right.
One was, but it was, it went on for hours with people talking from their seats, and she was complaining, I just.
Right.
I don't think the whole thing went more than hour and a half.
Mr. Malloy would have been up at the front table, then we would have had that squelching going on where he wouldn't been able to address them.
No.
So.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, my answer is no.
My answer is no, let's just move on.
Okay, so for item number twelve, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Faster.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to execute an agreement with Euthenics, Inc. to provide professional engine, engineering services for the TRU CR dash one two three Bridge Project located in, on Barclay Messerly Road over Eagle Creek and Braceville Township in the estimated amount of one hundred eighty-six thousand, thirteen dollars. The contract for professional services agreement with Euthenics was prepared by the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Motion to execute an agreement with Euthenics to provide professional engineering for the Trumbull CR one twenty-three Bridge Project.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number fourteen is to concur with the County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed, and that's Dominion East, Ohio, and the Trumbull County Metro Parks.
Motion to concur with the Engineer to grant right-of-way permits for Dominion and Metro Parks.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to concur with the County Engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits requested by the companies listed, and that's Jacob A. Weaver Company and Ralph Betts and Sons Excavating Company, Inc.
Motion to concur with the Engineer to grant annual supplier fleet permits for Jacob Weaver Company and Ralph Betts and Sons.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to approve the recommended two thousand and twenty-four call for service rates to charge police and fire departments, TC nine one one dispatches. The recommendation is for seven dollars. CFS based off, off of two thousand and twenty-two run numbers in addition to a ten percent increase. The nine one one plan outlined call for service fees as well as an annual review and increase associated with the customer price index for the corresponding year. The rate charge has not been increased in the past ten years. Over those ten years, the rate charge would have resulted in a thirty percent increase to date. A recommended increase of ten percent this year will be an appropriate temporary step in the right direction.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Um, does this include the cities too?
Yes.
Yeah.
We just got sent at the workshop the last two weeks.
Oh, no, I've talked to her too, she, she was going, what did you say, not Warren?
Tasty Von nine one one coordinator, Warren will be negotiated separate, they have a separate contract that has to go through legal. This is the, uh, cities, villages, and townships that we dispatched the other forty-three agencies with the exception of Warren.
Okay. Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
We have definitely a need to make sure that our nine one one services are covered, but at the same time, um, we saw some levies go down that are, that are going to cause extreme hardships for some of the townships. I don't disagree that it should be increased at some level, but at the same time, I think that the townships and the other communities, um, should have been brought together to have a, some type of public uh, meeting on the discussion relative to increasing fees on everyone when some of these townships are in crisis. I just, I'm, I'm voting no for that reason, so.
I would just say in response, um, had the nine one one final plan been followed for the last ten to twelve years, it's outlined directly in that, um, so there wouldn't have been a need for this update or change. Um, we did have a meeting with the police chiefs and the fire chiefs, so they would have a chance to discuss this with their fiscal officers and come back, and we have gotten a little bit of feedback from a couple of agencies. Um, for the most part, the, going back to them with a ten percent increase as opposed to obviously the thirty percent, um, we haven't gotten too much negative feedback on that. Uh, the ones that we have, we've answered, and I haven't heard anything back from them since then. Um, had a couple called from fiscal officers and, and they were fine with it. Um, that's not obviously everybody, but um, I think this is a good step in the, in the, in the right direction, at least to get us a little bit of an increase since they haven't been charged for the last ten years. Additionally, we're gonna get that nine one one final plan, uh, revisited and updated as along with the review committee seated.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen is to authorize the transfer of Mr. Brian Pichotti from groundskeeper, building maintenance department to the vacant position of custodian within the building maintenance department, pay range three, twelve years, eighteen sixty-one per hour effective Monday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Uh, because this hasn't, Brian's a great employee, uh, but this was not advertised since January, and I think that we need to be following our procedures properly to prevent any type of liability because there could be someone else who might be interested in this, but since it wasn't advertised in January, we will never know. So, only because the process wasn't correct, uh, I'll be voting no, and I also am interested in finding out why people are quitting and leaving for shift. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, the job was posted, Commissioner, we had multiple applicants, we reached out to multiple applicants, we interviewed one, had one go through a drug test, and did not pass a BCI background test. So, to answer your question, not only was the job posted, not only did I personally interview somebody for this position, and we were unable to keep, you know, a candidate, so Alexander Divan Dancy Bush in Resources Department, everything that you just said is not true, thank you.
Oh.
Thank you.
Now, I, where's the packet that you sent us? Because it had a lot of information about it, and it even says that it had been vacant, it, it was posted in January, so it hasn't been posted since January. Is that incorrect?
Supposed to be January.
Yeah.
I came on board, I did all the interviews. And we didn't fill the position, so.
It's November.
Sure.
So, in between there, it wasn't appropriate to repost it?
Why would we post it again?
Okay.
We received all the candidates when it was posted.
And we interviewed the candidates, and we were not successful in finding candidate, this is again, human resources, this is nothing new.
Okay.
Especially with the judiciary of our county right now as well, I mean, we have people coming and going all the time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Item number eighteen is to award a price proposal to Prosket Landscape Contractors for the installation replacement of one home sewage treatment system, HSTS, for an in, income-qualified household located in Southington Township eligible for assistance through HSTS Reserve Program in the total amount of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion, go ahead.
Motion to award price proposal for Prosket Landscape for the Home Sewage Treatment System projects in Southington.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number nineteen is to award a price proposal to Yoho's Action Septic Tank and Supply, Inc. for the installation replacement of one home sewage treatment system, HSTS, for an income-qualified household located in Warren Township eligible for assistance through the HSTS Reserve Program in the total amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars.
Motion to award price proposal to Yoho's Action Septic Tank for the HSTS project for the property in Warren Township.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
And item number twenty is to award the lowest responsive and responsible bid and enter into a contract with Carrilla Contractors, Inc. for the Yankee Lake Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, project number five dash S dash eighteen for the total bid amount of two million, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I, I just have one question, why was this not put on? This is, why was this not put on in advance? Why is it, was it asked yesterday afternoon and just? I have all the information, I've read it all, but I just wanted to understand why.
Because Rudsick was actually a lower bid.
Uh, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer.
Exactly.
Uh, it wa, I would, did intend on putting it on next Wednesday, but after discussing this with, uh, Bill Danzo at the prosecutor's office yesterday afternoon, and the notification that we need to get to the two separate contractors, and the deadline with the Ohio EPA to get the million dollars of principal forgiveness, he advised we should, we should put it on today.
When's the deadline for the?
I'm supposed to have everything submitted to them tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, but in pa, I, I will say that in past instances, I was just able to send over the draft of the resolution, and that satisfied him, knowing that it was going to be passed the following week, but since we still the two contractors in contention for this, neither one of them have been notified yet, and we can't contact and talk to either one of them until we have the approval of the Commissioners first, so that's when, uh, Assistant Prosecutor Danzo recommended we should just put it on today, so he can call and talk to them.
When did this come in?
Last Thursday.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and this was all information that was available at the workshop yesterday, had you chose to attend.
I, I, I read everything, and I've called him a few times, and he doesn't answer, but thank you, okay.
He was there yesterday, you could have seen him in person.
Mr. Cantala Mesa, don't do your service. Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
All right, that conducts the, uh, regular scheduled agenda items.
Oh, and I, I just want to add, when you're sending over something like that, um, I got all the attachments, but it's advisable to just put in a little explanation because you could have just put that in the, in the uh, text of the email, just, this is the reason why we're asking for it to be on late. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Petrowski.
Good morning, I'm Mayor Diddy Petrowski from the city of Portland. Um, we're here to, um, well, let me just start, I am here with all of my department heads, um, police chief, fire chief, uh, finance director, council clerk, my special projects coordinator, Jeffrey Jang, and our city council vice president, Scott Riley. We're here to, um, present a resolution to you and letters of support, um, encouraging you to vote for the nine one one center to move to the city of Portland. Um, may I, Chairman, may I approach them?
Thank you, Mayor.
Chairman, may I read this into the into the minutes? Um, Trumbull County Commissioners, dear Board of Commissioners, as you know, the former, uh, Cortland Bank, currently Farmers Bank Building, is in the process of being purchased by the Trumbull County Combined Health District, and they are, are seeking a tenant to occupy the vacant space on the second floor. The city of Cortland has become aware that one of the options being considered is the Trumbull County nine one one dispatch center. Furthermore, it is our understanding that the Director of the nine one one dispatch center toured the facility and was pleased with the site, providing that they can remodel it to fit their needs. The city of Cortland believes that the addition of the nine one one dispatch center would not only be beneficial to our city, but would improve the quality of life for our county employees. The city is aware that there are two other potential sites that are being considered, and we understand that the site in our downtown is not comparative in square footage. However, it is our belief that these sites do not o, offer an overall competitive benefit to the staff and county for a myriad of reasons. Reasons to choose Cortland, number one, employee safety. The nine one one center is a 24/7 operation with employees arriving and leaving at various times during the day and night. The safety of these employees is the utmost factor in a decision of this magnitude. The city of Cortland has been ranked one of the top safest cities in Ohio in numerous publications. Number two, employee retention. The nine one one center is currently based in Helen Township, which does not have an income tax. If the center is relocated to downtown Warren, employees will be subject to an additional 2.5% municipal income tax. Whereas the city of Cortland does not have an income tax, ensuring that the employee salary will not be affected by the relocation. When employees feel safe and valued, they are more likely to remain loyal to their employer, reducing turnover and the associated costs of recruitment and training. Number three, quality of life. The current nine one one dispatch center has limited natural light, which can negatively impact the employees working there. According to UCLA Health, natural light in the workspace can improve productivity and safeguard employees' health against physical and mental disorders. The Farmers Bank property allows for natural light to flow into the workspace, which will help improve the quality of life for these employees. And the city of Cortland has five restaurants, a coffee shop and other specialty shops within walking distance of the potential site. This will allow county employees to have a variety of choices when it comes to choosing their on shift meals or to meet any other needs they may have. Although the city of Cortland does not reap any monetary benefit from the relocation of the nine one one dispatch center. The value to the city comes in the form of economic development. The combination of the Trumbull County Combined Health District and the nine one one dispatch center will bring over 50 employees, helping to breathe new life into our downtown. Additionally, this investment by the county aligns with the goals of the city of Cortland's 2021 updated strategic plan. Commissioners, on behalf of the city of Cortland and the residents we serve. We ask that you strongly consider the Farmers Bank Building in Cortland as the site for the next Trumbull County nine one one dispatch center. And also as a show of support from our city council, um. Vice President Riley will present a resolution that was. Passed by the full council board. So I thank you for your time. Do you have any question?
All right.
Um, fingers are crossed. We are in the feasibility study phase of it and. I toured the location, Commissioner Cannon Lasa toured the location. Um, we're hoping that it's a good fit and I know from the employees I've talked to. Um, they're excited about the possibility and the combined health district is absolutely excited about the possibility of, of joining up with the nine one one center.
Excellent. I just thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Um, how long is it going to take for the feasibility study? Is Stacy still in here? Did she?
She is not.
Okay.
Um, she has to see, we have to seat the nine one one board, which we're in the process of doing right now. We went over that yesterday. At the workshop and hope to have that done within the next week and be ready to put it on the agenda for next week. Um, or the following week and then. Then they got to do what they do. Um.
What is this?
The feasibility study, the, the. People that we hired at one of the past meetings. We'll have to assess the three properties and see if any of them work or if there's the need to explore further.
They, they needed all, the primary reason for that was so that we could make sure that we were charging the communities fairly. And that's one of the reasons why the, the, the can has been kicked because, uh. The board wasn't put in place. So that's extremely important.
Yeah, the, the board has not been, been in place since.
Yeah.
Three board of commissioner terms, uh, I understand since the last time the board actually, they actually had a board.
Yes, I made an effort to have Patty work on that, but she. Didn't want to, she wanted to wait until the next. One came in. So unfortunately they had to, you guys did what you did today and.
I don't think it's unfortunate at all. We're moving forward and moving forward at a fast pace, working on something that hasn't been done in years.
And, and the, um, and then, uh, again, I'll, I'll assert that Warren seems to get to skate. Because of the communications between the law director and one of our commissioners, and I think that's one of the primary reasons for allowing that.
You have evidence of that?
Yes.
Okay. Please present it to the press.
I, I have and they didn't write about it unfortunately, I maybe.
Because, because there's nothing there.
I'll, I'll print the emails. Uh, I'll print the emails.
And again, Commissioner, you are a commissioner that called nine one one 23 times in the last year and a half. On the emergency line, so I don't.
And gave them false names and said you were other people and those, we can play those tapes as well.
We can play the tapes. We have to take copies of the tapes and I, I wouldn't say that any of them were emergency situations. When you called to ask to talk to the boss on a nine one one recorded line and then continue to talk about other things.
Deflection and it's unfortunate.
Tapes are public. You can go online and see them.
County commissioner who was working behind the scenes with a law director in order to prevent. Uh, a, a meeting to take place to negotiate and increase rates on Warren.
There was, there was nothing of the, of that.
You're exactly, you're exactly.
The spin and the politics have to stop. This is not for your political campaign to sit here and throw mud at people. That did not happen. Please stop. Please stop.
No, no, it did happen. It, it's listed as Clement, who is your brother, and you were messaging back and forth. You said Patty's going to come in. And, uh, Barry Merkel today. So you guys ended up having a, a meeting canceled that was going to include.
What meeting was canceled?
It was the meeting where we were just discussing the.
Making things up and it's very disastrous. You just want to do this for your campaign. Can we stick to the agenda and the facts?
It's, it's unfortunate that.
It's really unfortunate that you come up here and play politics and Jerry Springer every week.
Actually said that you were not, you were not able to vote on it, that both of you guys were conflicted, but yet behind the scenes you.
Can we get down to important business?
Let's move on. We have other guests here.
Mister Chairman, Mister, you voted against the funding of nine one one today. You showed how important it is.
Mister Martin, are you, you are here?
You know, let's have.
Mister Chairman.
Let's, let's have a.
Mister Chairman, please order, order. We have yesterday, today, we have yesterday today and there's an ask from Trumbull County, uh, neighborhood partnership at our land bank. Uh, from the ARPA for ARPA money for $2 million for demolitions. That has now been going back and forth with our legal counsel. I see that Sam Lamancusa is here. I see Matt Martin is here. Um.
Why do we have 52 projects from Gerard there or there, the demolitions from Gerard and then they're ignoring a school in a township that's boarded up? Can I ask the land bank?
They're going to be up here in a second. Then you could attack anybody you want.
Getting back on, on topic, this is a time sensitive situation where, um, you know, the funding, the, the, the ability for the, for TNP to leverage this funding is time sensitive.
We clearly understand your disdain for the people Gerard. You've said it in other meetings before too.
Um, there's.
Matt, can you explain a little bit? Because this is time sensitive and at least we need a letter of commitment from the board to move forward.
The township.
I'll let you guys know first. He has a floor, Commissioner, he has a floor. Then you can ask him questions.
And I, I think it's Braceville, um, maybe there's a school, a building that, that, the township is afraid that they're going to have to do it themselves. Because it's not on your list and it's been.
So where this is at right now, we're ready to submit our application. We have all the properties teed up that we've gotten all the proper. Documentation on from the, the various municipalities, townships and villages. So we have a $9.8 million application ready to go. We still need the Trumbull County match, of course, to make the application whole. And we know we've worked back and forth with legal counsel on getting it as eligible. I think we're almost there. We're just kind of like trading some language on the details of the greening aspects of it. But what we did for today as an idea is a letter, a match letter that's contingent upon that. Legal ruling from the lawyer. So it commits the $2 million towards the application contingent upon Trumbull County's attorney deeming it eligible under ARPA funds. That would allow us to submit today from what we understand of the $150 million set aside. About half of it has already been submitted for, and that does not include applications from Cuyahoga, Franklin, Hamilton, or Lucas County, which. Through the big cities, they're going to probably eat up the rest of that, excuse me. So we'd like to get ours in. Uh, we have a pretty solid application, uh, Commissioner, as far as the details, the property specific stuff, we can kind of. Go into that as we go, but where we're at right now is the application's ready, needs to be submitted. There aren't any changes that can be made at this point in the process. What we can do is consider it a work, a working project as we go. Once we're awarded and see what we can do to, you know. Move properties around or trade, but what we have right now is a complete application that's ready. Everything but this is ready. And so we think this, you know, sort of strikes a balance between like what you all need to obviously do on your end and what we need to get this in to be competitive. Make sure that we get a chance to do these demolitions sort of throughout the county. You know, we've been. Pretty heavy in the city of Warren and the cities over the last decade based on funding. And this allows us to get, we've gone out and seen a lot of these properties. These have been vacant, a lot of them for a very, very long time. So this is a really good chance. For the state to pay 75% of the cost of demolitions that have been lingering and piling up in a lot of the, uh. Reaches of the county for a long time.
And so Warren paid for their own. There's no Warren property on here.
There's no Warren property in the county's portion of it. Their ashes secure. We have their match letter ready to go. We got their properties teed up.
Right. And when I talked to you about it and I, I actually gave you the advice as to how to make sure that this got to our attention and, and came before the board. However, you made it sound to me like these were benefiting the townships and then I saw the bulk of them with 50 something, I think were in, in Gerard. So why is Gerard not paying for or contributing to theirs like the city of Warren is?
Well, we didn't seek Gerard out in that way. We don't necessarily think we're going to be able to do 50 demolitions for Gerard, but we, what we can do is talk about that as we go.
The townships are what we're supposed to be working with.
We have all their priority properties. We've got their, the properties that they want.
I believe there's a school that you, you omitted.
What's that?
I believe there's a school that was omitted. I, I, I.
You know what? I am certain that there are properties in this county that are not on this application, but it is as thorough and comprehensive as it can be right now today where it's at. We've gotten every township. To get us everything that we've asked for, if they've been able to and we're, and it's all ready to go in.
You have it. You have that information for, for that particular property.
I don't right now. Not off the top of my head. No, I could talk any.
No, I, I know that you do because they.
Commissioner, don't, don't badger the guy. Come on.
They, I got, I, I talked to someone. They said that they were concerned that they, that they're. I mean, I went to a township association meeting and talked about the product, the, the fact that you were doing this and going to take care. Of the townships and one of the townships that didn't even put in a request for, for, uh, any ARPA projects at all. Was excited to hear that and their, their only big eyesore is not being included and I want to make sure that it is.
Which one is it?
I believe that they would know. It's in, it's in. I believe it's in Braceville, the school or something.
We get the Braceville chief, do you have a school over in Braceville that?
Or something.
Needs demolished?
It's not on this list though. It should be, is what I'm saying.
So this application, the portal's open. Like I've said, the big cities are going to be ready. They're probably submitting while we're talking. And we can't make, so every property needs to be condemned or deemed unfit to be, and we need to get. Paperwork to that end for the application. We got a stack of that for everything that's in. So at this point, I'm not really here to debate individual properties so much as we need to get this in. This is the last piece of it. Like I said, I can always talk property. I'm available all day to talk property specific back and forth, but right now today, the, the order at hand is this match. For this money, make sure we can bring it home to Trumbull County.
Mayor Diddy Petrowski, city of Cortland. Um, the land bank put out. Emails to everyone and said, put your name on the list if you have a property that needs property or properties that need. Um, to be demolished within your. Area. Um, so everyone was given the opportunity. Excuse me. Um. The city of Cortland followed up to make sure that our name was on the list. I would encourage, I would have encouraged the other municipalities and townships to do the same. But we're at a point, he's telling you right now, that if we don't get this in, we don't have a chance of getting any money.
Right.
And. It is imperative that we get this money. So I would just encourage you to support. What, um, Mr. Martin is trying to do. Thank you.
I think it's critically important when we talk about what we're trying to do and talk about blight removal throughout the county, and this is an opportunity. To not only use the $2 million, but to, but to leverage that for a significant amount more. And there are significant amount of, uh, possibilities out there when we talk about what we can do to, to change the face of Trumbull County, and this is something that we have to act on immediately. Mr. Treasurer, would you like to add anything?
Mayor, I can't thank you enough. Uh, you, you virtually stole my words. I came up here. I came up here to say to you what the mayor just said to you folks. Uh. I am. The proudest person in this room. I'm going to tell you that right now. This program was born in my office 13 years ago. We, I don't need to come up here. I don't come up here every meeting. I don't come up here that. You don't hear a list from me of all of the projects we've been successful with. When you leave this building today, you'll see a project that we're successful with.
We build it.
Okay. Don't kill our success. Every, as the mayor stated, this team has worked. Day in and day out to contact everybody. There's going to be projects that are going to get missed. But give us the opportunity to take care of the projects now and we'll prove to you, we can come back and take care of projects in the future. We've been proving that now going on 10 years. 13 years ago, when I visited all of the townships, all of the municipalities and told them we were going to create this project. I didn't have 10 cents in my pocket. I went out there on a dream. To not take the advantage of $12 million with a simple letter right now. Is a hard pill to swallow, folks. You probably won't see me again. Until I have to come up here again, telling you that I got another project that I need money for. So. I'm here to help you folks. When we send out emails, when we send out letters asking for properties, we can only respond to those that respond to us. If it looks like we're tearing down too many properties in one community and not the other, be thankful that that's the community. That you're not in, that they needed that many demos and you don't need that many demos in your towns, communities and townships. But our track record is here. It's proven and it will continue to go. So please. Don't consider making a change because you feel that there's one or two properties that aren't getting addressed. They will be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just make a quick comment too regarding this. Uh, Mayor, I'm sorry you got worked up with that. Sam, those are fantastic words and you got to understand. From the second you started speaking, I, I clearly can see I'm in favor of this. I think the other commissioner is. Uh, the distraction in the middle of all the wasting time figuring things out or getting people worked up. That that's what needs to stop. You know, I was raised on Sesame Street when I was a kid and we are all working together as a community here. And there was a song they always sang, one of these things is not like the other. One of these things, this doesn't belong. Though, though, I think 99% of this room is on the same page and we got to move forward with that. And cut out the distractions, cut out the circus and just keep doing what we're doing as a community.
Man.
So I say, my vote is yes. I'm going to sign this. Mr. Kamalasa.
Yes, of course.
And you got your letter of support. Only takes two. The third vote is irrelevant. It doesn't mean anything. Two to pass.
Matt, I'm the reason you ta- you talked to me before you even put this in and you misrepresented to make it sound like it was townships. And then I saw the list. And it was primar- primarily a city. I just want you to know that, that, that you need to be, if you're asking for county money. To make sure that the townships are covered because that's what we should be working towards. And if you, and I will sign this contingent upon. You, if you, you getting that property that I believe you already have the information on. And if you have to swap something out in Gerard, which is getting 50 demolitions. For a township that didn't even make one request, I'd like to see you do that. Is that something that you would do?
I, I think you're trying to accuse them of cherry picking.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Something you'll do?
Thank you.
I don't think he needs to. He, it's already been clearly explained that the people had an opportunity to put in. If a township didn't put in. I'm in support of the township steward. If they didn't put in the right way, go to the township. Call the township trustees and ask them why they're not knocking on his door and making a scene of it. He's prioritized the list. He has his list and you're badgering him because of the list. Thankful that he's doing what he's doing.
Represented and I, I don't, I don't appreciate that. I mean, we have.
What's, what's misrepresented is, is the, the actual work that the Trumbull County Land Bank has done. And that TNP has done, were recognized throughout the state as one of the model, uh, land reutilization groups and, uh, one of the, one of the model agencies that takes care of that. That is the lead entity in that. Uh, we need to keep them, uh, moving forward. They've done so, I mean. Look around Warren, look around, um, uh, the municipalities. We need to do this all over the county and to, to alienate them right now and to. And to make them feel like they're not doing their job or scoring something correctly. I, I don't agree with. I think that they've done yeoman's work and I, I appreciate Sam and Matt and. Um, all their endeavors and their continued future endeavors. So thank you.
Yes, it's extremely city focused and there's nothing, that, nothing wrong with it that the cities have more blight, but at the same time, I think that we need to. They need to reach out and make sure that they're including townships because they're, they're smaller. They don't have as much staff. They, and they need not to be ignored. because they're, they're smaller. They don't have as much staff. They, and they need not to be ignored. And I don't know why. Did you, did we even ask Gerard if they were going to contribute or only Warren? Correct. I understand, but I just wondered if they were asked to contribute to their own, just like Warren did, you know?
Once again, a little bit set back to be quite truthful with you. If you have a belief that we're tearing down fifty parcels in the city of Gerard, I think even Mr. Martin a few minutes ago said that that's what Gerard submitted to us. That doesn't mean that every one of those parcels are a part of this. I mean, I can, once again, I stated in my, a few minutes ago, I could stand up here with a list that we've touched every township in.
That's what I asked. I, I asked it, the way Warren had theirs done, they contributed their money for their portion. I just wondered if Gerard was even.
Because Warren, Warren wants more done than we can offer them to do. So a statement that was made to them is, you want to put that much on the table? We need help from you. Warren came forward with the help.
Yeah.
Now, hopefully tomorrow morning, someone else will come forward after this reaches the press. I, I don't know. It's probably going to happen. What's going to happen tomorrow morning after this reaches the press is your county treasurer will be answering phone calls all day from guys that think that I should have tore down a building in their community. That's another whole nother issue. And I don't have a problem with that. I'll be here answering the phones all day tomorrow to help those people and address their situations. And it could very well bring a property forward that has not been requested of us. Will it happen in this round? I can guarantee you no. But I am here telling you that eight years ago, when I said we were going to do this and everybody thought it was over, I stood here and said, it's not over, folks. It's going to be happening again and it's going to happen again. I'm going to also forewarn yous that grant monies are going to go away for demolition. The future is going to be grant monies for rehab. Um, I see that every day. I don't spend every day of my life worrying about tearing down houses. We've done just as many rehabs in our programs and we're being looked at throughout the entire state of Ohio. So the next phases of programs are going to be rehab. So it's not just about demo. It's about rehab. We want businesses coming back into our communities. We tear down this stuff. We give them areas to build. Now we're going to need houses to house their folks that they're going to need to employ. That's what this is all about. This is about fixing and straightening up the years of blight. And any township that is requested is being addressed. If there's one or, there's always going to be one or two buildings that fall through the cracks. It's not hard to do. It's the same thing with everything we address as politicians. If there's an issue that has to be looked at, it will be looked at. But to, to be that we're not, I, I'm, I'm hurt a little. There's been many, many townships. Warren Townships had properties taken care of. The mayor came up here acknowledging that they've had stuff taken care of, acknowledging that we reached out to them. We didn't reach out to just Cortland. We reached out. This team reached out and sent letters to every single township, every single corporation. We've even worked with school districts over the years. If you look at some of the Warren schools that had buildings near them that we've taken down, it's, it's, I'm just so proud of everything we did and we'll continue to do everything that we do. We just need that boost to do it. We don't need discouraged that there's a building that you didn't tear down. I'm sorry, Commissioner. I mean, if, if you have a building you want me to go walk through, I'll be more than glad. There's a building that no longer stands in Liberty Township because your county treasurer was escorted off the property by Liberty Township Police for trespassing on property because I was taking pictures to turn in with my grant application. It is now housing in a state of Ohio. I'm, I'm a little upset. I'm lost. Uh, their, their road on Belmont Avenue now, that beautiful complex, the state of Ohio.
ODOT's complex.
Yeah, the ODOT complex. That how that property was made possible by the Trumbull County Land Bank. We tore down, nobody remembers if there was a four old horrible apartment complexes there. That's in a township. So it, it happens. It's just, it's a matter of, I don't know, my grandfather, and I'm not practicing it, so I should be quiet. My grandfather used to tell me, just be quiet, do your work and be patient, you know? And I'm not practicing any of that right now and I apologize, but that's what this is, program's been all about is just patience and it will happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything for the greater good of Trumbull County?
Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. I'm curious to know how much money it would take for Ms. Frenchgo to actually come to work and do her job. Not only is she missing the workshops, but she just recently missed an important meeting this past Friday with Corsa, a meeting that I believe she was fully aware of. Uh, she missed this, I think, to go campaign up in Newton Falls. I'm sorry, volunteer up in Newton Falls at a place that she could volunteer at three times a week, every week, anytime, but she chose that day. Ms. Frenchgo, why don't you tell the public why you weren't here for that Corson meeting last week? I heard online, you, you said that you didn't get a, was a, a direct invite or something. I guess somebody didn't put a bow on an invite for you directly. But how much money would it take? Cause a hundred thousand dollars a year you're getting obviously isn't enough for you to come to work. So what would it take to get you to come to work like you're supposed to? Could you answer that for the people?
Anybody else have anything for the greater good? Okay, let's go to the phone lines. If you want to be, if you want to be heard, hit star six and announce who you are and where you're from. Star six on the phone lines. Yeah, hearing that, I'll entertain a motion.
No, I wanted to bring something up. Back in uh, January of 2020, uh, the Board of Commissioners at the time, Morrow, Frank and Dion adopted a resolution ordering the adoption of, of a form project labor agreement. I, well, obviously I wasn't on the board at the time, but I remember what precipitated this and was at some of the meetings when there was discussion. And it was brought to my attention that our county is not complying with the resolution that was adopted in 2020. And I would like uh, to get this back to our department heads, the deal in this area and make sure that we're complying with what you voted on, Commissioner Cancel Mesa.
There are certain departments that cannot comply with that because of state and federal guidelines.
Okay, but it.
Is that the departments you're talking about?
This is the first time I was made aware of it. This should be part, we should have a procurement file that shows everything that we do relative to contracting and how things are when they come in. This is the first time I heard of it from someone in the community that brought it up to me that this, that they don't believe that we're going by what was voted on. And I had no idea what they were talking about it because it was the year before me.
You don't know the procurement policy?
Well, no, this is what I'm saying. So the project labor agreement, I, I would like us to, as a board, make sure that we're abiding by what you guys voted on.
Since we have a new board, since we have a new board and there's two new commissioners since this was voted on, I suggest we take a revote and see if we can come to a conclusion on it.
Okay, then maybe put, you know, you guys can put that on.
Well, you're bringing it up. You put it on.
It's already been adopted, so.
But obviously you don't agree with it.
No, I don't agree with the Board of Commissioners not following their own policies and resolutions that they've adopted. That's what I'm saying.
You don't follow policies and resolutions that we have on file and we talked about it at the Corso meeting. No.
So.
You don't follow the, the social media policy. You don't follow policies in general.
Talking about, about project labor agreement. I'm not an, I'm not your employee. I'm a commissioner and we need to make.
And I'm not your employee.
We're following the resolutions.
What I suggest you do is bring something, bring something.
Project labor agreement that you voted on, then fine.
I actually helped draft it with the, with the trade.
You drafted it?
Yes.
Okay.
If you, if you don't want, if you don't want to follow it, that's up to you.
When's the last time that we've had one of these agreements since I've been here? Since you've drafted this, Morrow, when's the last time you've actually, can I make a records request of when our board has used?
What are you doing?
Apparently trying to get labor's vote or get an endorsement or a check or something. Apparently is what she's trying to do.
It's all it is. It's all it is. I'll tell you what, why don't you come up with a procurement policy? Why don't, since we have two new board members, you come up with a procurement policy, bring it to the board.
I, I did the first year I was here.
We'll bring it to the board and we'll vote on it.
And what follows by it, follows it.
We'll vote on it.
Okay.
Bring a procurement policy that you think is beneficial to the board.
Done that.
Beneficial to the trades, whatever you think.
Comply with your own procurement policies.
You don't, you don't comply with any policies.
I'm talking about contracting. That, that is the, the.
Can you even go through a metal detector, let alone?
Purpose of our, of our board is to contract, is to contract.
Commissioner, you're embarrassing us in front of the whole, can you please?
You're bringing up twenty.
If you have an issue, bring it up on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda.
This is an embarrassment.
Well, what about the, what about what was passed and rushed through with the roofs last week? Is there a reason that that was?
Are you just all over the map?
Did you, did you not hear the demand from the public and from the engineer to get the roof going and get things moving on that?
But we didn't even.
Did he scare the whole county that we're not going to have plow trucks?
Didn't review it. And I'm wondering if this should have related to it. That's all. I'm just saying, when people reach out.
Why'd you bring it up last week then? Is this something I gotcha you found later?
Week, I wanted to wait and do it this week because it was brought up to us on the floor and we were asked to vote on that. That should never happen. We should have some time to review things. And it's questionable as to why.
If you'd have come to the meeting last Tuesday, you'd have been prepared for it on Wednesday.
It's not what happened.
Instead of, instead of a week later.
They gave us nothing. They gave us absolutely nothing and they, and, and he brought it up.
Think anybody believes any of this stuff from you or they don't see through it? I mean, are you in your own world, your own mind and, and another level right now? People are watching this. They see, they hear the voice coming out of your lips and they're saying, what?
Last week, the, you had Bill Hart hand you something to, but ask us to vote for it on the floor. Not one commissioner reviewed the proposals.
You're wrong.
You're wrong. We, we were, we were at, the day before at the workshop.
Given it, just as today you voted on something that we did not receive as a board.
Again, you are omnipresent. You know what the board does at all times, what we review, what we don't. I mean, it's crazy that you know all this.
Apologize for not providing it to us before the meeting. He said, I'm sorry, Commissioner. I should have given you that information. I mean.
Did you not read an email that he shared with the prosecutor's office?
That's not the same item. It was.
He said yesterday he may want to present it.
That's not it. It was something else.
Something, something else. It's always something else.
No, it was item number ten. I asked if he had their statement of qualifications or anything related to that and he didn't, he didn't provide it to us. It's not a big, I, I mean, it's a big deal. I mean, you didn't, you didn't give it to us. It's not.
Yeah, Commissioners, when I did send over that engineering agreement with Burdisson Naple, I should have submitted the results of the RFQ, but Burdisson Naple was found to be the most qualified for the project. And you just have to trust me on that and I'll send it over to you after the meeting.
Why would we judge them? Why would the board judge them? We'd rather have a professional engineer judge for them.
But, but we did have the score sheet and, and she is correct that I should have attached that when I sent over the resolution.
To vote on it based on what we're reviewing, not just what you think.
Commissioners do have enough trust in a department head to be able to, when I tell you they were the most qualified, that they do believe me. And I'll send it over to you and, you know.
And you'll see that's true.
I just happen to believe that as a, as an elected official, we're responsible. Our primary statutory duty is to, is to contract and we need to at least be reviewing everything that we're voting on. And, and I hold that opinion. I know that the rest of my board doesn't. But in the, in the future, he will. And I wasn't trying to, to, to say anything about that except for the fact that this happens on a regular basis that we end up with things that come to our agenda the day of the meeting or the day before they're pushed through. And we have not reviewed the proposals or, or anything. And that, and this week it was this one. And then last week it was the, uh, the roofs. So we just need to make sure that the department heads, I believe, are doing a better job by making sure that we have everything we need to vote on things rather than just blindly rubber stamping it because uh, uh, someone says, hey, this came in, not, not.
How are we blindly rubber stamping it when we in a public meeting yesterday that was held with the press there, discussed it and he said, yes, we reviewed it.
Last week and it.
There's nothing blind about it. It's all public.
It was roofs and there probably should have been a project labor agreement or, or it should have been evaluated or looked at. And none of us even had any information about the agenda, the item that.
You're talking about your friend from the trades that contacts you about getting work?
I'm, I'm talking about.
Trying to deflect work to the trades? Is that what you're trying to do?
What I'm sa- what I just.
All it takes again.
What, what I just said was.
We have the email from her. We have the email from.
Right. An agenda item came up to the, at the end of a meeting. It was brought to our attention that day without any information at all. We voted on that. And then after the fact, I found out that there probably should have been, the project labor agreement might have applied to that. And I, I just want to make sure that we're doing things compliant and we're not. Well, when we, when we add things at the last minute and the commissioners don't even have an opportunity to, to review the proposals, we're not doing our job the right way. You're not. I mean, I, I will only vote on things that I reviewed. You guys can vote on things just because you want.
That's your opinion and I respectfully disagree with you.
Week and this week, there are examples of how it happened.
No, they're not. Those aren't examples. We discussed it at a public meeting. So if you don't accept what he says at a public meeting is truth, that he's sitting there and lying to the press as he's telling you that he scored these.
The guy who signed his own resignation because he just sits there and does whatever's in front of him. I think we need to do a better job of actually looking at what's coming before us, reading it, reviewing everything and voting on it because we're not here just to rubber stamp. We're actually here to review everything before we vote on it. If you don't want to, fine, trust, but at least trust, but verify.
We trusted at a public meeting where he's saying exactly what he said to you today.
Okay.
If that's not enough, I don't know what to tell you.
Okay. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Anyone else on the line? Anyone in the?
Bill Hart, do you have anything?
Phil, do you have anything on this? It's ridiculous.
Bill Hart, Maintenance Department.
Thank you, sir. So um, I presented uh, a floor motion to move on with these projects. And after we passed this last week, I had a records request through the clerk's office for information. The people that got and graded this information are skilled individuals. Mike Swinski, Nick Coggins and Architect Engineer that reviewed these documents, all these papers that are in this clerk's office and voted and came up with a number that was qualifying a company. What else?
Let me ask how, you just mentioned the three people. How, how, why was it Nick?
DM email.
What now? What, why was it Nick Coggins? I'm just out of curiosity.
I could pick in, I could pick you to grade a company. Would you like to grade the next?
Well, he's the economic development director at the planning commission.
Has no idea about, like Mike's, Mike Swinski makes sense, but I don't know about Nick Coggins. Yes.
Review and all that.
Exactly. And what.
Would you like to review?
The point I'm making right now, and I think you made it very easily for me, what you just handed us.
Sure.
Should have been handed to us before they voted.
We were told that at a public meeting. Who was on the scoring committee? How they scored it. It's all been said.
It's all there.
Been said. I'm just saying.
In a public meeting.
Did you receive those through the records request that you initiated?
After, after, after the fact though, these need to be to us before we vote. Let's.
You're not voting on them. You're voting on the outcome.
We're not voting on them?
You're voting on the outcome, which is the people that graded those.
Yes.
Are skilled people. You don't trust any of those?
Tell me again.
Or maybe the, no offense, Commissioners, I'm getting close, but maybe you three should vote on these people and then we'll just move on.
Oh, that's, that's better. That's not.
Because I'm out of the loop. They're out of the loop and nobody is but.
Maybe you should just hand select them.
I'm asking.
Let me just make a comment. The economic, the economic development.
Yeah, you have. You haven't beat on the planning commission in a while. Go ahead.
The economic development person who is associated with the chamber who is voting on these, just also the Chamber of Commerce recommended one of the owners of those companies to be on the workforce development board. And, and then went ahead and gave this to them.
How do I know that?
Dawn Incorporated. I'm just saying, these are the things
I wouldn't know that.
So you don't
So I picked somebody that I maybe should background them people.
You have someone with a background in designing and engineering and construction management, or you don't have
Anybody in this room would like to be on the next selecting committee? I will be glad.
Maybe, maybe Matt Martin, cause he, they, they do that type of thing, you know?
And that's all it is.
Renovations and, and, um, yeah.
I'm just asking. I don't know where else you want me to go with these projects.
Okay, I, here's where you need to go. You need to go to the commissioner so we can actually review things before you come and try to make motions from the floor because we approved them.
The motion from the floor that was approved last week with qualifications and the backgrounds of the people that graded these aren't good enough?
No, it's not good enough.
Okay, so then
We need to review them. We, we should have, we should have, I'm, am I crazy for asking at least a day to review things that we vote on?
So do I need to put out an, and
You, you put motions on the floor almost every meeting for us to vote on. As do you. You put motions from the floor all the time that the commissioners have had no chance to review and you expect us to vote on them that day? I mean, the hypocrisy is right in your face.
No, this is, these are
Review any of those, Commissioner? So you asked for them last week?
Yes, I asked for them.
And did you get them?
We got, but the
Did you review those?
Not before it was brought to the board.
To this point. From then until now?
Yes, I got the emails.
No, did you review them?
Yes, I looked at, I looked at them. I didn't go through them.
Did you read through all those documents?
My, my, that was a public records request that someone else wanted. They asked me for something because they assumed that because I was the commissioner and I voted on it, that I had a copy of what I voted on. Far be it from me to, like, this is absurd.
In each, each project, there was two projects.
Third, that a, a person in the public who would, everyone would, would assume that we had copies of what we're voting on, but we don't. That's
It's actually somebody from the trade.
Doesn't matter who it is.
Well, let's be very honest.
Let's think with facts. If it's a public request, we gotta have their name. Who was it?
Was somebody
Or, or did it happen?
Actually the roofers.
Who was it?
It was the roofers.
I know who she is. I graduated with it.
Okay.
So, but again, she got all the information.
Be very honest.
There's not, exactly. The honesty is, is that you're presenting things to us to vote on without us even having an opportunity to review it.
Was passed last week was blessed by Mr. Dantzel downstairs as well. And they came from
Doesn't matter. We, we, he's not the, he's not the, he is not the one who makes the decisions on on contracts. He approves them as to form, correct, form correctness.
We're gonna have to agree to disagree, Commissioner.
Did you just rubber stamp? I disagree with rubber stamping.
I disagree that everything's a conspiracy theory.
Okay.
And I think we were all a little bit dumber having listened to the last 10 minutes of this conversation.
Review things before
This is just arguing to argue. I don't
I, I understand that you don't, I, I'm just asking.
Just stretching it out before the commercial break for sponsors.
Right.
I have not reached out to the company that was graded higher than the rest yet. Do I want me, do you want me to wait? Or to move forward with the Ohio Engineers roof?
You were, I'm still fine with what you're doing, Bill. Majority of the board supports what you're doing. And this is up to you, Alexandra, if you even want to jump in the circus, cause this gets us nowhere. Majority of the board is
Well, I just want to verify something for the record because it's my profession that's being, um, constantly battered every week and I'm being made fun of and poked and prodded at. So I would like to make sure now that Bill Hart's here or, you know, building vehicle maintenance supervisor, uh, that he can attest to the fact that him and I sat down and personally interviewed these candidates who applied for custodians back when the job was posted. And we were not able to find anybody. Bill, can you please attest to that for everybody here in the room?
Yes. I was with Alex and we interviewed these people. After I went through 90 applicants and weeded it down to 15. Then myself and Alex weeded it down to the last five and then we called for an interview. Three declined.
And this had to have been after March, April, May, somewhere in there, cause you weren't even here then. Okay.
So then we weeded through those. Technically, the job should have been filled within 30 days for the CBA. Technically, we were in violation, technically. And when I was a chief steward, technically, I used to do a lot of things to get the union to get things pushed through. I'm on the other side of the fence. We've been prolonging this agony for so long and then individual stepped up to the plate and says, hey, I want to take the afternoon turn job. We didn't have to repost it. It's already been up. It's been up since then. It's done.
You had candidates.
Had candidates.
Yeah.
Just have one final thing that I would like to end with, if I may. And I think that this is something that we all really need to take serious. I hear a lot about what the county commissioners are and aren't supposed to do. And I would like to cite something from the CCAO directly. County Commissioners must be astute and have a good business sense. Perhaps the most important attribute of a county commissioner is the ability to lead and listen to the needs of the citizens, other elected officials and department heads to compromise and to develop a consensus on priority issues to improve the county. That's what I would like to end this meeting with. Thank you for your time, Commissioners.
Wise words.
And, uh, and when we were hiring, when we were hiring for the HR director position, it was
Throw a cheap jab in here.
Here we go. Here we go.
Here comes.
No, it was advertised.
Can't let it be positive.
Comes, draw it back and just name it right out and let her go.
It was advertised.
Let it go.
It was advertised three times.
And nobody wanted to work with you.
Nobody wanted to work with
Five candidates said, I cannot work with
That's the God's honest truth and I hope that I, I tried to have the press contact these individuals. They wouldn't come to Trumbull County and work here because of one commissioner and that was you.
That is absolutely the truth. We had a 911 person pull out after she got interviewed by you. We got tasty, which is great. We had one second, nah, I can't handle her.
Because of one individual.
Not gonna do that.
Who's gonna want to come work for you when you won't even trust your department heads?
It's not true. There, there were, there were
You just attacked our planning commission or sanitary engineer, TNP, our HR director.
Advertised three times and there were people who were interested, but whenever something political is lined up, they keep on going and going and going in order to, you know, get
A wise man once told me, Commissioner, when you're in a hole, you quit digging. And for some reason you like to just keep digging and digging and digging. Trying to find China or something.
Okay. Why don't you just
Sir, go ahead.
My name's Kelly Glenn. I'm from the city of Niles. Um, I would just like to point out that
Portland to sit and laugh like that.
Excuse me?
President of council.
They said it's rude for you to sit and laugh like that in the city of Portland. That's what she said.
I'm saying like
It's a, it's despicable that you're playing to your audience on here.
Jeffrey and the president of council were cracking up insults toward me. I think it's unprofessional.
Think it's unprofessional that you're doing this.
Everybody in this room. Do you not realize everybody in this room was laughing at you?
Unprofessional for three years.
They're laughing at you, not with you, Commissioner. At you. I can go run to a man and woman in the room. Every one of them in here is shaking their head.
Meeting properly? I mean, seriously?
This isn't a talk show. And your ratings suck lately anyway, just so you know. Um, Mr. Glenn, it's your time.
Thank you, sir. I'm coming from a public point of view. Now, I, I'm, I have a vested interest because of my wife, but I, I've been through three commissioners' boards back to Mr. Paul Eltzel and Dan Polifka, Frank Fuda, Mauro, and now you three. Um, throughout all those years, it was always Tuesday for the commissioner's homework. So they came to the board Wednesday meeting, informed, and this is weekly that Ms. Frenchgo, if you think they are in having a illegal meeting, please resolve that issue. And if it comes up that the meeting is legal, please show up.
Well, you just started blowing air at me, not at yourself.
That's what you're doing.
No, it was
What do you like, 15? Let's move on with the meeting. Come on. Ridiculous.
Yeah.
The department heads are well compensated and they're professional and they're elected officials. You have no right to question somebody that is on a higher education level than you in a certain issue, ma'am. Please work with your colleagues to better the public, the county, the 197,000 members of this county. Congratulations on taking the Ween Building down. I'm glad it didn't turn into the old St. Joe's and sit idle, idle, idle. The progress i- is phenomenal and I'm glad to see the, the planning commission and all the professionals. And you, you, you stand up, you think you stand up for women, but you have two amazing women back here that took over positions from longtime auditor and HR director that was in a spin and 911 director that was in the spin. Please take the, the wins. We're providing services for the public and, and the public is thank you, Mr. Malloy.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mayor, Paul, on behalf of the board, I apologize for two of us.
Thank you. I appreciate that. But I'm here to stick up for the people who came for my city. We came here in good faith. And to have them called out in a public meeting is unacceptable. And I just wanted to show that I stick up for my employees and my council members. So, um, I would, you won't see us again if this is the type of decorum and behavior that my people have to face because I won't put it, I won't put up with it. But thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate the time to address you.
Again, welcome to our world. I'm sorry you had, got a chance to experience it today a little bit.
I apologize, City of Portland.
March cannot come soon enough.
Amen. Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. Ms. Frenchgo just said something about unprofessional. You know, everything out of her mouth, every action she's taken. Uh, playing with her heater over there, putting her heater on people, coming out here with a hammer, you know, when commissioners are sitting there smashing things, throwing water on Dean Harris. I mean, come on, this woman, nothing she does is professional. You want to talk about professional? She's online just recently, talking about the HR director, saying how she's, uh, unqualified. She's a hack. She had no experience in HR until she was hired. Well, it's funny because Ms. Frenchgo had no experience being a commissioner until the voters of Trumbull County took a chance on her. And boy, are they regretting that now.
Can't be done. Everyone needs a chance to jab at me. Come on. And what, and what did you say about trying to probate me a minute ago?
I'd like to drug test you right now is what I'd like to do because you are hyped up.
I agree. I agree.
I don't know if it's Adderall or what it is, but you were hyped on something tonight. And I've been around people my whole life. I've been in law enforcement. There's something not right here.
Suspended?
Never. Pull my record, pull my record, mister. Ask for my record.
Another one of her lies, Commissioner. Another one of her lies.
And I've been around a lot of people with drug problems. You can do that.
Mark Joseph, City of Niles. I just wanted to end this in a, uh, uh, on an upbeat, if you will. Um, last Wednesday, when we met the three of you, um, let, let the, um, the residents of Trumbull County get involved in the transportation situation by allowing us to, uh, start a, a committee, just the residents. And I do thank you for that. I, I appreciate it. Our input, I think, is very important. Uh, it's critical, actually. Um, I wanted to let you know that, uh, uh, Mr. Salamone is assisting us with this and our first meeting location undisclosed. Um, we are, uh, going to meet, um, on the 21st for our first meeting. And hopefully we can generate some positive in the, um, in the, in with the transportation group. So I do want to thank the three of you for allowing us to do this. I think it's a big step. So thank you.
Appreciate your willingness to serve too, Mark. Thank you, Mr. Joseph.
All right. I think that is a good way to end.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchgo?
No. I'm sure there was someone else out there, you know, that had something to say about me.